Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The last time I gave opening remarks, it was about the sense of optimism I was feeling for the city, and I'm going to continue that theme today because I couldn't help feel that way after taking a drive through not only District 3 but District 4 and District 2, and to see what was going on, and then to return to my office to watch a recording of a webinar that was given last night about what's coming next at the Med Center campus as you move across Saddle Creek to the west. Folks, there's big things going on in our city that are creating all kinds of jobs, housing, and while addressing the important goals that our city needs to accomplish in order to remain sustainable going into the next, you know, four or five decades. And so, just if you haven't seen what's going on or you're not aware of it, all you have to do is take a drive from the Makers District down to Laurisson Gardens, a little bit west out by the old St. Patrick's Church, just south of 14th and Martha, and then into the Med Center campus, and you will see an amazing series of events and projects coming together, and there's more coming. So, I just wanted to share that optimism. It's a beautiful day out there, and why not have a smile on your face today? So, let's get to work.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east of all the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today as a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business. We ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. And I notice my machine is not enabled.
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
Items 6 through 9 can be considered together for enclave flats located at 18818 Fort Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6 and 7 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item 8, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 9, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Before we begin the public hearing, I would advise council members, there's an amendment on item 7. So, if there's a member inclined to move to approve, I'd appreciate if you take the first motion on 6, 8, and 9 as one item, and then item 7 will need to be amended by motion, then approved as amended if so desired by the council. We'll now open the public hearing on items 6 through 9. Any proponents?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer and the development. This is a 106 lot subdivision at 188th and Fort. The reason for the amendment to the zoning ordinance is that there's only 106 lots, and there was a typo that said it was 107 lots, so it was just fixing that little issue. But other than that, I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. It's just an amendment.
Roll call.
And this would just be correcting the lots to 1 to 106. Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0.
I believe Mr. Harding had the ads amended. It's her second. I'll second it. Roll call. It's the approval of 7 as amended.
As amended.
We're already there. We're now voting, but thank you for your enthusiasm.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Items 10 through 12 can be considered together for Woodbrook, located northwest of 180th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Before we begin the public hearing on items 10 through 12, I want to welcome the Dean of the Planning Attorney's Delegation back to the council. It's good to see you, Mr. Follencamp.
Thank you. That's when you're known as the old guy. Does anybody remember him?
We open the public hearing on items 10 through 12 at this time.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Follencamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm here on behalf of Celebrity Homes, which has developed a rather large subdivision at 180th and Fort Street. This is the fourth phase of that development, and it is on the northwest corner of 180th and Fort Street. It has the recommendation of the Planning Board, and you have seen it before. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Gray. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 19th and Leavenworth Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Amelia Drake, 1414 South 16th Street, on behalf of the Berkeley.
Thank you. I'm sure you're happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 16212 West Maple Road from AG District to DR District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, 7 to 0. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for property located at 2430 and 2428 Lake Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone this property from GC District to NBD District. Item 16, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items 15 and 16 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow large group living in the R6 District located at 1720 North 40th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 18, to consider a Class CK liquor license application for Dina's Place located at 2112 North 30th Street, Suite 201.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. We have Gladys Harrison and Tricia Harrison registered. Welcome, Gladys.
Hi.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
My business address or my home address?
Business is fine.
My name is Gladys Harrison. 2112 North 30th Street, Suite 201, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are you happy to answer any questions? Thanks. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, 7 to 0.
Good luck.
Item 19, to consider a Class C liquor license application for Indigo Downtown Omaha, located at 1802 Dodge Street.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. We have Vanity Zoffe and Mackenzie Manning representing the applicant.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vanity Zoffe with 1802 Dodge Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 20, to consider a Class I liquor license application for Tixteco Mexican Restaurant, located at 2203 South 16th Street.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Salustino. I'm here for Tixteco Mexican Restaurant. Here for any questions?
You're the owner?
Yes.
Welcome. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item 21, to consider a Class IB liquor license application for Vibrant, located at 18101 Chicago Street, Suites 104 to 105. Is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
I don't see the applicant on the video conference. Do we have time?
You do.
Is there a motion to lay it over? May I confirm that Ms. Bonamire, you're not in the chamber today? Seeing she's not, she's not registered to participate, we'll have a motion second to lay over one week. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 22, to consider a liquor license addition application for Night Owl, located at 3902 Farnham Street, to add an area approximately 82 feet by 20 feet, and an outdoor area approximately 20 feet by 8 feet. Is communication in opposition.
We have a public hearing opening on item 22 with Mr. Michael Kelly representing the applicant, registered by video conferencing. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here for the applicant, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 23, a resolution to require Azul Sports Bar, located at 5132 L Street, to submit a formal application.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Now, the first people will be from the city, presumably. Mr. Wiesen, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. This resolution is before you today at the request of the Law Committee. It seeks to require FAMA LLC, doing business as Azul Sports Bar, to submit a formal application, a formal long-form liquor application, to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to renew its liquor license pursuant to Nebraska revised Statute 53-135 to continue operation. The hearing before the council today is not a hearing on whether or not Azul Sports Bar should actually have a liquor license. Rather, the hearing today is to determine whether there is sufficient information in the record before the council to warrant an investigation through the long-form process to see if the license holder still meets the requirements imposed by statute. Since the license was first issued in 2018, there have been 14 formal tavern reports. They include what has been marked as Exhibit 1, tavern report dated March 6, 2019. In this report, officers received a radio call to respond to Azul for a fight or disturbance in the lot. Reporting officers, when they responded, approached several parties who stated an unknown male had entered the bar, began making advances towards a female patron, and then punched two individuals in the face before leaving the bar. The next tavern report is dated, marked as Exhibit 2, and dated May 19, 2019. In this report, reporting officers were called to Azul for an assault. The victim was found with a head injury and ultimately transported by Omaha Fire Department medics to UNMC. The victim stated he was having a verbal argument with somebody in the bar and then was struck in the head with what he believes was a beer bottle. He was then pepper sprayed. While reporting officers were at the location conducting an investigation into the incident, they could see staff inside the bar, but were not allowed entry into the bar by the staff in violation of the rules and regulations of Liquor Control Act. The next report, which has been marked as Exhibit 3, is dated August 5, 2019. In this report, officers were dispatched to Azul Bar for an alcohol overdose. They found the victim from the bar in the parking lot, and a squad was called. The victim was unable to answer simple questions, and he could only make primal guttural noises, according to the officers. The victim was drooling and dry-heaving while in bed at the hospital and had a BAC level of .398 at the time that it was taken. The next tavern report has been marked as Exhibit 4.
Can't see it, Brian, or Ryan. There you go. Thank you.
And is dated September 2, 2019. In this report, officers received a radio call to Azul and responded for a noise complaint. When they responded to the bar, they observed after hours one patron who was so intoxicated that he needed to be carried out of the bar by two men. This would be a violation of rule and regulation that prohibits over-serving of intoxicated persons. The next tavern report, which is marked as Exhibit 5, is dated September 28, 2019. In this report, responding officers were called for a male party having a gun in the parking lot. As officers ran and wrote to the call, there were additional calls, 911, indicating that shots had been fired. Multiple witnesses on scene stated that they were outside the bar because a fight had just taken place, which resulted to five shots being fired into the air as a party left the area.
And then shrink it down just a little bit on top. There you go.
The next tavern report is marked as Exhibit 6 and dated November 3, 2019. In this report, officers were dispatched to Azul for a crowd disturbance call. Upon arrival, reporting officers noted that several additional officers were on scene in an attempt to get a large crowd disturbance to disperse. Reporting officers had been called due to an out-of-control crowd fighting in the parking lot area, which required police presence and action to disperse. The next tavern report is marked as Exhibit 7 and dated February 22, 2020. In this tavern report, reporting officers, along with the Omaha Fire Department, were dispatched to Azul in response to a complaint that the bar was exceeding its maximum occupancy. The reporting officers spoke with security at Azul, who stated that they themselves called after they reached the maximum number of occupants allowed, but the owner instructed security to continue letting more people in. The security personnel stated that prior to the officer's arrival, that they were over the max occupancy by approximately 100 people. The next tavern report is marked as Exhibit 8 and dated March 13, 2020. In this tavern report, reporting officers were originally called for a noise complaint. When they arrived, they observed a fight breaking out in front of the front doors of the licensed premises. The next tavern report is marked as Exhibit 9 and is dated June 3, 2020. In this tavern report, officers were dispatched to assist with a crowd disturbance at Azul. A reporting officer spoke with gang unit officers who said that they observed a large group of individuals fighting outside of the bar. The gang unit officers then stopped a vehicle leaving the area and identified two individuals present in the vehicle as members of the Gangster and Disciples gang. These two gang individuals indicated that they went into Azul, but then quickly left the bar and were followed outside by rival gang members who were located at that premises, and that's where the altercation took place. While there, reporting officers asked to see the liquor license for the establishment and found an expired license, and the license holder, the bar owner, could not present a current license to the officers at that time. The next tavern report is dated, is marked as Exhibit 10 and is dated June 12, 2020. In this tavern report, officers responded to Azul for a compliance check. Upon arrival, they observed more than 75 patrons within the bar in violation of directed health measures on the percentage of occupancy that establishments could have. They spoke with the owner, who was not wearing a face covering or mask, and the owner could not produce a certificate of occupancy for the officers at the time, nor could the license holder present a valid liquor license, although the license holder did have the current, or the expired license, which had been presented previously at the last call. The next exhibit is marked as Exhibit 11 and is not in the form of a tavern report, but is an informal complaint that was sent to the police department. It alleges, it's from a citizen, that there is loud music at the premises as late as 2:30 in the mornings, being a nuisance to the neighbors and the neighborhood. The next exhibit has been marked as Exhibit 12 and is dated June 16, 2020. This tavern report alleges that officers were dispatched to Azul for a robbery. Reporting officers met with the victim, who stated that she was jumped by 20 people inside the bar, and during the altercation, someone picked up her and her sister's belongings and left. The next exhibit has been marked as Exhibit 13 and is dated August 9, 2020. In this tavern report, multiple Southwest Precinct officers responded to a 911 call at Azul. The caller reported that nine people were physically fighting and alcohol was involved. Reporting officers arrived on scene and spoke to the owner, who stated two brothers exited the bar and began to argue near the front door. They were arguing and attempting to fight each other, and that someone was possibly punched. Then, a short time later, another officer was approached by a male who was bleeding and stated that he had been in an accident. The investigation revealed that this individual had been involved in the fight at Azul and then drove off with a blood alcohol level of .294 percent with two toddler children in the vehicle. The vehicle then collided with another vehicle, and the individual then fled the accident, and the other motorist who was involved pursued him until he pulled over. Toddlers in the vehicle stated that the individual had been, quote, "hitting people at the restaurant," being at Azul Bar, and the toddler's mother was also in the vehicle, who had a blood alcohol content of .196, and stated that they had just left Azul Bar. The next tavern report is marked as Exhibit 14 and is dated February 28, 2021. In this tavern report, officers were dispatched to UNMC for a report of a cutting. Upon arrival, the officers made contact with two victims and a witness who stated that they were at Azul. When a fight broke out, officers were advised approximately 15 to 30 people were involved in the fight, and around 200 people were at the bar. Officers were advised that the individuals were throwing chairs and bottles as part of the fight. Officers viewed that both victims had multiple lacerations requiring medical treatment, and one victim was admitted to UNMC. Another officer responded to Azul and observed a large amount of blood on scene. The final tavern report for the record has been marked as Exhibit 15 and is dated March 26, 2021. In this tavern report, reporting officers responded to the parking lot of Azul at the request of off-duty officers to assist with clearing the lot at closing time. Reporting officers witnessed several physical alterations in the parking lot, and off-duty officers made mention that there were also a few physical altercations that occurred inside the bar throughout the night. In addition to these tavern reports, there is also an incident that occurred recently involving a shots fired call near Azul that officers cannot definitively link to the liquor establishment or the license activity, but to quote their words, "it's just too much of a coincidence at this point," and they believe that the investigation may still be ongoing. These reports have all been marked as exhibits and will be submitted to the city clerk as part of the record. The liquor license for Azul was last renewed in October of 2020, and since then, there have been two tavern reports involving significant disturbances, one license suspension by the Liquor Control Commission, and again, the shots fired call nearby that officers believe are likely related to the bar, but cannot definitively prove at this time. The license holder has additionally been called in before the Law Committee on two occasions and has been asked to implement measures to end these disturbances, but they continue to happen, as evidenced by the continued tavern reports for multiple fights and disturbances. The question before the council now is whether or not there is sufficient evidence before the council to warrant an investigation into whether the license holder is capable of exercising the type of management and control necessary to conform to the rules and regulations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Act and the regulations imposed by the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. I'll be available to answer any further questions if the council has any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents in favor of the long form? Seeing none, we'll now hear from the license holder.
Michael Pult, 2712 South 87th Avenue, here with Abraham Centeno, who's one of the owners of Azul Sports Bar. Can you give your address?
5132 L Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137, or 117?
In rebuttal to some of the testimony you just heard, the last part is completely unfair that a shot fired in and around the restaurant would be attributed to Azul. The council should not take that into consideration. Secondly, with respect to Exhibit 2, that was actually adjudicated before the Liquor Control Commission, and several of the statements contained in that police report are inaccurate, as testified by some of the officers at the Liquor Control Commission when we had the hearing, namely that they weren't allowed inside, and other aspects of that testimony. With respect to Exhibit Number 3, where they said there was a visibly intoxicated individual at the premises, what actually happened there was the guy was, came into the premises, and he was on some sort of medication or drug, and that's why he appeared intoxicated. He did not get intoxicated to .396 at the premises. With respect to not displaying their liquor license on several occasions, which they accepted responsibility for in front of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the business had difficulties during the pandemic getting a certified copy to hang on the wall, which was then rectified, and they did accept responsibility before the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for that. And they did accept responsibility before the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for that. Several of the, of the tavern reports contain unverified statements by Nebraska or Omaha Police Department. It's what they've been told. It has not been adjudicated, it has not been verified that those witness statements are correct. And so we'd ask the council to consider that. For purposes of the, of the company, we'd ask the council to oppose the resolution for the long form application. And Abraham Centeno is here to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, everyone in attendance. So, the last time we spoke, we've had two tavern reports, one on February 28th for cutting slash a brawl. In all fairness, the guys that got cut were the ones that started the brawl. We've banned them, they haven't came back since, and we've been fine with no fights. Second one, which was March, the very last one we had in March. March 4th, a large disturbance in the parking lot. In all fairness, I was out there with the cop. There were, it was just one drunk guy out there, and then we're kicking people out. As you say, it was 0150 in the morning. They were just watching the drunk guy, like not listening to our off-duty cop security and that, there was, there was no, the physical altercation inside the bar was them arguing. That was, there was no physical altercations. But, that, that's all I have to say for the last two tavern reports. We have cop security, we have four inside security. And ever since that little brawl happened on February 28th, we switched to cans only, no more glass. And, that's all I have to say. We're, we're doing our best to make the bar safe, everything.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents to this item? And just for the record, council, each council member will give the weight that she or he feels appropriate to each tavern report and presentation by Mr. Weising.
Understood.
Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. I'm sure I had it right, so. So the, I think there were 14 tavern reports that you presented, as well as one was a, was not a formal tavern report, but that would have been 15 reports, basically. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you give me the, the time span on those again? Like maybe a beginning and end?
Sure, the first tavern report is dated March 6th, 2019. And the final tavern report is dated March 26th, 2021, so approximately two years.
So the, and then the, so those included the two tavern reports? I thought you said since October 2020, is that what you said?
That was when the license was last renewed by the statutory process.
All right, and, and since then, and the ones, we just had two in, in March and, and one just prior to that, too?
Correct, and that total includes those two subsequent tavern reports.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ryan, don't go far. Couple of questions. I'm sure our council president could probably answer the questions as well, but I'll go ahead and ask you. When, when we do the long, when we request the long form, it's not saying that we're denying. When you do the long form, that would, would that give us the ability or the liquor commission the ability to maybe put some additional terms and regulations on the license, like what we've done in the past for other bars?
That is correct. This long form doesn't cancel the license, it doesn't revoke the license. It's a statutory mechanism that's in place that simply requires the Liquor Control Commission to require the license holder to submit a new long form application, which will then trigger the same public hearing requirements that you have for all other liquor licenses and would then go back to the Liquor Control Commission for an ultimate determination on whether or not it should be issued.
So this would actually give, actually the council the opportunity, it might actually benefit the owners if we were able to go through the long form. At another hearing in the future, we could ask for some additional terms, which then the owners would have to follow. And I think if they followed some additional terms, maybe they could avoid any more tavern reports. But today isn't the day that we can do something like that. Today, it's just long form or no long form, correct?
That's correct.
Because I, I think what I would like to see is, I would like to see having a discussion and, and having that discussion with the owner before it even comes back to discuss some additional terms to the liquor license if we were going to renew it. And that would, doing the long form is the only way we can get there, right?
Yes, and that would be in the council's discretion.
Okay, so I, I mean, because I think, what I don't want the owner to think is, is that's it. If we do the long form, then they're, they're not going to be able to do it. Sounds to me like there's a lot of problems that have gone on here in the last two years. This may be the last straw, but there needs to be some significant improvements in security and making sure that the people that are being attracted to the bar aren't the people that are going to continue to cause these kind of problems. Whether or not the shots fired came from your bar, people came from your bar or not, I would have to say with 14 tavern reports, you know, that's a concern. So we would want to see what kind of security is there to make sure that your bar and your patrons are protected. So I think going the long form route would probably be the best, the best way to do that. And I would, I would also say to the owner, if we don't go with the long form route, I mean, I could see at this point not, not having you renew your, your license. I mean, if, if you have another report like this, this is going to be a big problem for the people that live in that area. And I don't think the council wants to see that. So I just wanted to clarify what today was. Thank you.
Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Weising, I have a question for you. So, tell me again, because I, I know we've seen Mr., is it Centeno? Abraham, okay. We've seen him here for the liquor license when it was, I think maybe his name was added. How many tavern reports since the liquor licenses changed have we had since?
Ryan Weising, Assistant City Attorney. I can look through the, the printout from the Liquor Control Commission. I don't have that specific information available to me off the top of my head. I know two tavern reports from the last time it was renewed. If he was added to the liquor license at that time, then that would be your, your answer.
So I think too, and then another question too, for you, Ryan. What require, what's required within, like our policy for a tavern report? Is, is, are there certain requirements, or is it just anytime 911's called?
It's my understanding, and you may want to seek clarification from the police department on this, but at any time that there is an incident that occurs at a premises that is licensed under the Nebraska Liquor Control Act, that the police department will fill out a tavern report and forward that to the city council for the council's consideration along with to the Nebraska Attorney General's Office and the Nebraska State Patrol for, for liquor licenses. I believe that's triggered anytime law enforcement is, is called to a licensed premises, but it is, I think, in their discretion to do.
So I mean, I, I do see a deputy chief, but I don't think it would be fair to put him on the spot to ask him that question. But with what you just said, you're saying that a tavern report can be generated by a loud noise complaint, the same as a shots fired complaint?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear. Not to dismiss what we're seeing in front of us as far as tavern reports. So Abraham, if you could come up, please? Thank you, Ryan. So you have to give your name and address.
Abraham Centeno, 5132 L Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68117, Azul Sports Bar.
So I, I remember seeing you before here. And obviously, I've seen you since then. But there were some problems with this establishment, and it was similar to other bars in the area that your success has brought you problems. But I think when you came on board, you just recently got out of the military, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, tell me what you did there.
I was in the Marines, six years, just got out June 2020. And since I took over, I mean, my first month, I think there was one, one or two tavern reports. Then we came to talk to you guys and then we had those last two tavern reports, which we had cop security at the time, we had inside security. We learned from it pretty much not to sell glass anymore for nightclub hours. We've, we've been selling cans only at night since the February 28th incident.
So we've had you in front of the law committee, which I serve on with two others as well. And, I mean, we kind of told you the steps of what was going to happen if things didn't get turned around. And unfortunately, they have, but they haven't, because you've had a lot of tavern reports. But tell me what you've put in place since you've been part of this liquor license that has decreased the tavern reports with only having a couple of them since you've been on. Tell me what you've changed.
Definitely more like strict pat downs, no matter how many times they come in inside out the bar. We have strict pat downs, ID checks, have cop security. They come at 10:30 PM till 2:30 AM, and they've definitely helped out a lot.
So off-duty officers is what you put in place, and where did that recommendation come from?
It came from the last time we spoke with you guys, and that's why we took it. Even if we're busy, we still have, I mean, even if we're slow, we still keep them, and just to be safe. We, we feel protected with them.
Okay, now, again, the success, because a lot of these reports, and again, I'm not, I'm not dismissing the fact, but when you can get a report for loud noise the same as something else, it, it does kind of question that policy, and maybe we need clarification on that. But you, you've got some problems that need dealt with. And, and some of the problems you have is the location of where you're at. I know you're zoned properly, but it doesn't mean the neighborhood just to the south of you is always happy with your success. So I, I'm going to support the, the long form here, but I, I think it's in your best interest. That way, you know, if there's changes we can make to, to help and make you successful, then that's what we'll do. But we can't just dismiss what we've seen from city law here, so. Thanks for showing up. Thank you.
No further lights. What's the pleasure of the council? Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on Agenda Items 24 through 36 were held on April 20, 2021. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 37 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. We have someone registered on Item 37, but I don't see the person actually in the queue. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 50, a resolution to approve the 2020 Tax Increment Financing Annual Report.
Before we begin the public hearing, we'll hear from Bridget Hadley from the Planning Department. Ms. Hadley, welcome. As the, and as the police say, just the facts.
Good afternoon, council members and President Jaram. Bridget Hadley, City of Omaha Planning Department. As a preface to this report, the Tax Increment Financing TIF program allows the City of Omaha to engage in public-private partnerships to engage, to encourage private investments in areas that have experienced disinvestments, areas of, in need of housing, areas in need of neighborhood revitalization, and areas with historic properties that can be repurposed, as a few examples. TIF is also, helps to sustain a neighborhood community's economic base as well as spur on additional development. So just a few highlights, hopefully, of the TIF report for 2020. Omaha has 253 active TIF projects. This represents about 428 million in TIF loans and 3.5 billion in total project or capital investments. These TIF loans represent approximately 12% of the capital stack or capital investments. This means that Omaha is leveraging $8 of other funds for every $1 of TIF that's invested in these projects. In 2020, so this is, in the TIF report, just kind of shows the graphic of the comparison of the 428 million of, of TIF loans for the 253 active TIFs and then the 3.5 in investments. So in 2020, 18 new TIF projects were approved and all were located east of 72nd or near 72nd this particular year. So this map, I don't know if I can, basically shows that this is 72nd. So here are all the different projects spread out, North Omaha, downtown, midtown, and Crossroads and Exarban area. These projects represented approximately 27 million in TIF loans and almost 219 million in total project investments. The types of projects range from mixed-use projects like Hub 1401 in downtown or Furniture Row, also known as the Swivel Apartments in the Crossroads area, that will produce housing as well as jobs, potential new business startups and innovation. Also, housing projects ranging from single-family owner-occupied units to rental units that include market-rate and affordable units like Meridian at South 72nd and West Center Road, and the garage lofts in downtown, which proposes three and four-bedroom affordable apartment units. Also, commercial projects that preserve older structures like the Benson Theater, restored for performances and other community activities, and sometimes historic structures like the, the Redfield in downtown, which was, which was restored for use by, and, by new and relocated office tenants and eateries. Omaha also has approximately 17.7% of its total acres that are blighted. And that's also about 5% that are extremely blighted. So just touching on affordable housing, in 2020, the program approved various TIF projects that provided 84 affordable and low-income housing units through the TIF program and TIF projects. The TIF program has helped provide approximately 1,427 units of affordable and low-income housing units over the past decade through 37 different TIF projects. So next, I'll talk about, on page eight of the report, the state requires that we report on the comparison of initial projected values of the 20, 253 active TIF projects to the current assessed values of those projects. Table eight on, or excuse me, the table on page eight of the report, the cumulative variance subtotals column, so this column here illustrates that the initial projected values were only off by about 19% from the current values assessed by the Douglas County Assessor's Office. So that's what this number represents here. Factors such as location and the stage of construction completion affect the results. In last year's annual report, the group of active TIF projects' initial projected values were off by about 23% from the current values assessed by the Douglas County Assessor's Office. So while there are different perspectives and different ways to view that and interpret that, one perspective is that the development community is getting better at projecting their, the final valuations of their project. Now to move on to paid projects or projects that have matured. Omaha has a total of 100, or has had a total of 166 TIF projects that have matured or have paid off after the 15-year term. In 2020, six TIF projects paid off or matured at the end of the 15-year term. And that's what this shows here, and this is Exhibit D in the TIF report. Those projects began with base values around 6 million or less and grew to approximately 79 million in assessed valuation by the end of the 15-year term. This represents 1,195% increase over the base assessed value and tax revenues.
What was that number? I didn't hear it.
I said this represents an increase of 1,195%. I said this represents an increase of 1,195% over the base assessed values and tax revenues.
Thank you.
Yes. Using historic growth rates provided by the City of Omaha Finance Department, a simple what-if analysis was conducted by the Economic Development Staff to see what growth may have occurred if there were no TIF or little to no development on these same six projects. The results were a 29% increase over the base assessed value and tax revenues. And these two graphics in the TIF report demonstrate that. This particular graphic is showing, showing the increase in the base valuations. So beginning around 6 million, increasing by 72 million, which is that 1,195% increase over the base, and then if there was no TIF, the increase was only 29%. And then when you look at the revenues, again, the increase in the revenues is 1,195% for the TIF projects, but if there was no TIF or no to little development, would have only been 29%. In conclusion, the choice to approve TIF projects often results in a much larger increase in the tax base, which benefits the city, the county, and other taxing jurisdictions, as well as citizens. Because the projects are helping to fulfill the city's master plan, various redevelopment plans, and city goals for economic and community development, the projects also help to make Omaha a better place to live through housing provision, work through business investment, and jobs, and play through dining and entertainment venues and options. With that, I am here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any people wishing to testify as proponents on this?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. It's a nice presentation. However, there's some things that I think are missing. It doesn't say whose properties are valued or paid off, who actually paid those property I'm sorry? I'll save you the time. Later, I'll comment on, I find it strange that nothing was said about city's participation in this, and it suddenly has disappeared from the agenda item when you talk about TIF projects later on. You won't have to listen to me say it again, but that's kind of interesting that all of a sudden, we don't talk about the city's participation. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, to clarify for anyone in the chamber or listening, watching at home, there were several false statements that you just heard. For the record, the information is on the properties listed on the last page of the report. And the city always provides in its TIF resolutions within the agenda, the information as to the level of participation, the criteria required by the Community Redevelopment Act, whether those criteria have been met, and the level or amount, percentage of the project that will be financed by tax increment financing.
May I reply?
No, you may not.
I'm not a liar, sir.
Well, you just made several false statements, so we had to correct the record, so the public wasn't unwillingly or unknowingly misled. You're welcome to leave the chamber, sir. You're out of order. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 50 is approved, seven to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 51 through 53. Ordnances to transfer permanent easements to OPPD for properties located near 10th Street and Missouri Avenue.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Midtown Crossing. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 54 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 55, an ordinance to approve the 77th and Dodge Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on item 55 begins at this time. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Are there any other proponents or opponents on item 55? Public hearing is closed.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve the Blackstone Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
The public hearing on item 56 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on this item?
Todd Swarzak, Nodle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Swarzak. Public hearing is closed.
Item 57, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary for various positions as listed on the agenda. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Are we doing both 57 and 8?
Well, 57 and 8.
Okay. We'll do three different public hearings then. Public hearing on item 57 begins at this time. Proponents, please.
Deb Sander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on item 57? Public hearing is closed.
Item 58, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of the class specification entitled Recreation Supervisor to Recreation Coordinator. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item 58 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Deb Sander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents wishing to testify on item 58? The public hearing is closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary for Information Services Technician and Police Information Operator 1. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item 59 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Deb Sander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any other proponents or opponents on item 59? The public hearing is closed.
Item 60, an ordinance to approve the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2021-2022 Budget and Work Plan in the amount of $568,098.59.
The public hearing on item 60 begins at this time. I was wondering where you were, Ms. Barrett. You were over, hidden over to my right here. Welcome.
Thank you. Holly Barrett, Executive Director, Omaha Downtown Improvement District. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on item 60? The public hearing is closed.
Item 61, an ordinance to approve the Other Transaction Agreement for a five-year period to provide four TSA-certified explosives detection K-9 teams.
The public hearing on item 61 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 62, an ordinance to amend the Interlocal Agreement with the City of Valley for Keynote Lottery Proceeds.
The public hearing on item 62 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 63 through 86, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:58.